Five.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the agenda, the pre-agenda meeting of August 29th, 2026. Five. Can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Betty Rush.
Yeah, sort of here, yeah.
Vice Mayor Sarah Malaga. Commissioner Christopher McBoy.
Here.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Sorry, I'm here.
Commissioner Anthony Segrich.
Present.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. I just, well, let's go down the agenda. Let's do that.
Madam Mayor, if I might, I have to leave early for an appointment. If I could, I have several items that I wanted to raise. If we could do that early on into the thing before I have to leave, that would be great.
Okay, let's, in terms of time, you know, you complained that it's me that does, I talk about timing, but we have an hour. You said you have several things. How many things? I mean, how long? More than 10 minutes?
I doubt it, but.
Let's start with you, then we'll start with you, and we'll limit it to 10 minutes. How's that? And we'll limit everybody to 10 minutes.
Okay, I'm looking for, thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate the accommodation. I'm looking for consensus from my colleagues for legal to provide written clarification of the conflicting inflow, information that we heard between the CRA documents regarding affordable housing for the W Mota apartments versus the city documents for those. I'm looking for consensus from my colleagues that we can get something written from legal to, you know, so we know what really applies and who's agreed to what and which takes precedence. So, looking for consensus there.
Mr. Segrich?
I believe legal answer of that question, the documentation that we approved last night supersedes any previous agreement. Pretty simple concept.
I was looking for just a written confirmation of that.
Making a record, Mr. McBoy. Ms. Malaga?
I believe that there was a record when it was stated at the meeting, and that is public knowledge, and it's on YouTube, so I do not want to spend taxpayers' dollars to have the same thing done. In addition, I read through the CRA's documents prior, way prior to all this conversation, and, you know, it's spelled out very differently than what is being accused. But I do not want to have any more staff time or attorney's fees spent on this when somebody can just go back and watch YouTube or do a public records request.
Okay, Mr. McBoy, that you don't have consensus.
Okay, next item, requesting consensus to establish a rule prohibiting the use of phones, tablets, et cetera during commission meetings, with an exception written in for if one publicly discloses, "Look, I've got a personal situation," somebody might have a new babysitter or a family health emergency or something, but in general prohibiting that, that use.
That's interesting, because I see you on your phone quite often. I'm surprised that you're bringing that up. Mr. Segrich?
Actually, rarely, but.
So, I use my phone and laptop to look up ordinances, and I have electronic copy of documents from the dais, so I don't think it's appropriate that we would be limited to paper only.
I don't think we should. Here's the one thing, let me caveat. There is anything that we write during a meeting, whether it's to a friend, of anything, that is public record. So if someone sees someone writing during the meeting, you can ask for the public record of that. Ms. Malaga? Anyway, but let's go to, let's go to our attorney first, and then Sarah. Sorry.
Good morning. I just want to clarify that private messages are never public record. So if it's, you know, a message between you and your family regarding family matters, that even if it's written during a commission meeting, that is not a public record. If someone sees you on your phone, they can ask for the record, and then we will determine if it is a public record or not. If it is a public record, it would be disclosed. If it's not, then you have to hold it for 30 days. Okay?
On that, since we have you, what about, like, as we, as we sit on the dais and take notes and, you know, that's, is that public record?
Your personal notes are not public record unless you share them with someone else.
Ms. Malaga, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, because I have turned in notes to, to city staff after we've had meetings, and they're like, "Well, now you've made them public record." I'm like, "Well, I never know if somebody's going to ask for it or not." I have two phones, one is city, one is personal. If I am on my city phone, it's the same as Mr. Segrich just said. I'm either sending an email to staff pertaining to something that we're kind of having a conversation about, or I'm looking up and researching, because I don't keep a laptop at the dais. This is my personal phone, which also runs my businesses, and if I have to correspond with an employee over an issue that's happening at my business, then that's something I have to take care of.
Okay, let's move on.
I mean, that was brought us, who brought that up at a meeting last week? Someone brought that up at a public.
Former Commissioner Stokes, who used to be on her phone and her laptop at all times.
She was. Okay, thank you. All right, so.
Next item, I, I'll take it as there's no consensus for a rule on that. Requesting written and clarification of any constraints on the use of calling the question. In the particular example I'm thinking of, when we, when the question was called at the last meeting, Ms. Miller had requested to speak and as one of the parties, so that seems kind of important, and Commissioner Segrich had also had requested to speak. So I'd like some clarification. Can anybody call a question at any point? Are there any constraints that if, if there's pending comment, or if it's in the middle of a comment? I'd like some clarification on that, not now, but just written clarification for our edification to better run our meetings.
Okay, Ms. Elizabeth, can you do that quick for us? Not today, but can you do a little memo about that? It's a rule, Robert's Rules of Order thing.
Sure. If you all, if you all have consensus to, for me to do that.
Anybody else, anybody have a problem with that?
I consent.
Okay. Me, Ms. May.
Thank you.
I mean, I think it's a waste of time to ever write it down. She can just tell us, but okay.
We're going quickly, or we're almost done. I'd like to request on a future meeting, you know, soon-ish, but, but in general, an update on the PBSO mental health unit that was discussed a while ago. Where are we? How's it, some sort of, sort of like Captain Karen gives us updates on the homeless intervention unit? If we could get an update on the mental health unit, that'd be great. Next item, and I guess, I guess I'm asking for consensus that we put that on an upcoming meeting.
Have you asked, I mean, have you done anything? I'm just curious, because we all have different approaches to questions of fact or whatever.
Well, I'm requesting it.
I'm asking you, I'm asking you questions, Mr. McBoy. Have you, have you, I'm just curious. Have you asked them? And have you said to, "Hey, what's going on with that?" Or you're just looking for the public? I'm just curious.
I'm looking for the community to understand where we are on that, and all of us on the commission. It was described as something that was coming. It was, I think, sort of in progress. Just like to know for the public where we are on that, that's all.
You want an update? You just want an update?
Yeah. I believe that's in fact the word I used.
Anybody have a problem with that? No problem. I mean, no, okay, so that's fine.
Okay. And we're in the home stretch here. Yesterday, we all received a letter from the, from an attorney for the Copperline Horizon project, the hotel at the beach, hotel at the golf course, and it actually proposed a written language for a charter amendment for us to approve putting on a ballot at some point. I thought it was quite curious that a project that has not even gone through our P3 project is actually proposing, not, not asking for an amendment to be put on the ballot, but actually says, "Here's, here's the language that we'd like you to put on." Especially because we've had assertions in the past that any of these charter amendments wouldn't be related to any specific project. Seems pretty clear that this particular project, which has not gone through our P3 process, is already asking for a charter amendment, so I would just like to express that I think we're very premature to even consider charter amendments.
Well, I responded to.
Chris, can you tell me who that email came from? I don't see it.
It was Louis, it was Jamie.
I sent it out to all of you.
Oh, 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 okay, sorry.
I looked at it briefly. I looked at it briefly, and I saw that language, and I was, I forget my exact response to Jamie, but it was like, "Really?"
Oh, I see it, I see it. Okay.
Yeah.
I was not impressed, and I thought it was, I wrap a couple of hands up, Mr. McBoy. Other people, do you want to speak? Mr. Segrich and Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Go ahead.
The, they weren't actually calling for a charter amendment. They were calling for a referendum that did not encompass a charter amendment. I believe the letter was in response to our agenda items, where we're talking about doing charter amendments, and then they were proposing a way of doing it that wouldn't require a charter amendment, which is, if you've seen any of their presentations, it's kind of consistent with the messaging that they have, but, I mean, anyone can send us any letter they want. We get letters all the time. And I think the commission made clear by consensus the other week how we were handling that particular proposal. I believe direction was given to staff on that. Is that correct, Jamie?
That is correct. You guys decided that there would be no grandfathering in of any proposals that was received before the policy was approved at the meeting last week. And I was just going to mention that, because I've gotten multiple calls and everything on this whole thing. We, we don't control, the city doesn't control neighbor associations or who they invite to give presentations. We have no way to dictate how those presentations are actually presented to the public. That's all something separate from us. So there's, we don't have control over what people say or what they send us, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Ms. Malaga?
My, oh, sorry.
No, I'm just coming to address some of the issues I have.
Okay, Mr. McBoy?
My last item, and then I'm, and I appreciate the consideration for my timing constraint. The last item is, I am very concerned, given my responsibility and all of our responsibility to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, and as a scientist, I'm extremely concerned about what is happening to the CDC, the Communical Diseases Center in, I believe it's in Atlanta. It looks like chaos. It looks like an enormous attempt to overrun evidence-based science on health issues, undermining the credibility of what had been a worldwide, world-renowned, very solid institution, and our federal government is, is just dismantling it, and that has very big consequences, whether it's measles, whether it's upcoming epidemics. I'm very concerned about that, that, that is going to put, the best information that I'm getting is that putting all of us at increased health risk, and that's not acceptable.
I think we all are very concerned about certain things. Thank you. Anthony, is that a response to Chris? Because I'm going to get Sarah's hand up for a while. Oh, and Mr. Brown. I don't know who to go first. Let's have, I always defer to Mr. Brown, just, but Sarah's been very patient, but let's start.
Yeah, really quick, since Commissioner McBoy said he's going to have to leave early, I was going to ask at some point during the meeting when I had a chance. You'll see on the agenda for next week, an unfinished business that requests for motion for reconsider for the direction provided for the K Street parking garage, which Commissioner Segrich actually took care of on this past Tuesday night's utility meeting. We still have that item on the agenda, a garage item on the agenda. I would like to ask if it would be okay to leave an item on, unfinished business, to have a discussion on the garage. There would be no motion, it is not, there's no motion, there is no vote that would be taken. But we did meet yesterday, the pertinent staff, and we would like to have a discussion as far as how to move forward, and there would be two slides we would add. So we would basically update that agenda item today and push that out in a couple hours, and then there would be two slides that were worked on yesterday that would be added to that item. Obviously, it's, this just happened Tuesday night. This would not meet the, as Commissioner McBoy mentions, the, the time as far as getting this on prior to the meeting. But if you guys would allow us to do that, we'd like to add that if possible.
Well, we do have something on the agenda about the K Street garage. I mean, can't that be incorporated into it? We are really.
That, that's what I'm asking, because what's actually on right now, and we have not updated the agenda yet to remove that, since the item is, there's a garage item on unfinished business, we would like to leave that on and just change the actual staff report and add two slides for discussion. Again, no vote to be taken, but just for discussion.
Okay, any response to that, folks?
I, I completely support that. I think that if we can do a big push social media-wise and let the community know this is their time to come out and give us their thoughts. You know, I really want to make sure that we're listening to the community in regards to size, height, density, design. And even though we're not going to be making a vote, I want to be able to open it up for people on the record, because I felt that what we did the other day was kind of taking it out of that realm, so I'm very thankful that we're keeping it there, and I would really just like our PIO to do a big push on social media, on, on any contacts that we have to let people know to please come out. If they can't come out, send in their comment in regards to, we want their opinion on, on what's going to be in the downtown for, in perpetuity. So I support that.
And Vice Mayor, as I mentioned before, there was, this item was never taken off, so.
No, I know, I know. I just, when we had the discussion the other day, it made me, I was uneasy about not having the public have access to this.
And then that, that whole conversation at the last meeting was horrible. Ms. May?
Thank you.
On the garage thing.
I understand, thank you. Mr. Brown, do we know that we have the correct legal information? What we can and cannot do?
Yes, again, that frustrating meeting last week, but we do have all of the correct information now, which you guys should have had prior to last Tuesday night's meeting.
When will we get it? When will we get it? When will it be published if we do this?
We would update the staff report, and this would be out within the next few hours.
Mr. Segrich?
Thank you. My concern is we've had several staff reports with incorrect information. And before we publish something to the public about a staff report, I would like the chance to validate it and have discussion and staff inquiry. That's kind of what we voted on, is that we were going to have one-on-ones to get in-depth to the nitty-gritty of the particulars of the zoning and setbacks and all the particular rules. So I would not be comfortable in us immediately publishing something yet again. However, I do agree with Commissioner Malaga of giving the public the opportunity to give feedback on issues of height and density and so on. I am just very uneasy about publishing another staff report without first having the opportunity to question staff on it, because there were some very, very basic things that staff put a stake in the ground and said, "Nope, we are absolutely correct on," that they've gone back on several times. And so I would be in favor of having public discussion, but I am not in favor of looking at a staff report before we get eyes on it, especially the Friday before the meeting.
Yeah, can we do this on the 16th?
We can do this whenever you guys like. I was just, we already had an item on here.
I'm uncomfortable with it being four days away on a holiday weekend. I don't think enough time to get people there and to get people. I, I just, I'm really uncomfortable about that after what has happened.
And again, the only reason we were bringing this up is because there is already a item on this agenda to discuss the garage.
Yeah, but I, we haven't, we haven't had a, I don't know about you guys, but I didn't have a one-on-one this week. So I didn't have a chance to talk about this at all. So I agree with Mr. Segrich, is that we said we wanted to talk in, to get more information from staff before we were in, not that there's anything that the staff is going to tell us in private, that they won't tell us in public, but at least we have a little bit of time to, I don't know, I'm uncomfortable with it, seeing as what just happened. I'm very.
I mean, are you okay with still leaving it as a discussion, though, so the public can come give us their input?
Yeah, but not, why would we do that on Tuesday when we could wait and do it on the 16th with some more notification?
So what would happen to the agenda item that's currently on the agenda? Would that go?
And we get told, and we wouldn't talk about the garage.
Deleted.
We would just delete the current item and just add this item on to the 16th meeting. Again, it was just a request because we already had a garage item on. I completely understand, based on last week's meeting, so I completely understand.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Yeah, that, that, I have to say, Mr. Brown, and, and, I mean, we, you know, a couple of days after that disastrous meeting, we get this memo about how we really can't, I mean, it was, so, yeah, I think the more input that we have and the more knowledge that we have is better. Mr. McBoy, we're going to move.
I believe that was the very next day.
It could have been the next, I would, I think we were all in kind of a shell-shocked situation the next day.
You were alone.
I'm sure, I am sure we weren't. How to make us look stupid on the dais? So, Mr. McBoy, we're going to move it to the 16th. Does that call any concerns you have?
It just is the longstanding concern that we should honor our commitment to follow the deadlines. We have a procedure for an emergency addition. Propose it as an emergency addition, and we can evaluate whether it's an emergency.
That's what we're doing, so you're fine. Okay, so, so take, so this will be removed from this agenda and put on the 16th as amended, and please, I know, we didn't have, I didn't have a one-on-one this weekend, let's get us, please, when we walk onto that dais on the 16th, I want each one of us to have a firm understanding of what can be done, what's the difference between mixed use, what, really, this is so important, and I just, I just reflect my commissioners.
I'm, I'm looking at Vice Mayor Malaga, though, and would, she has her hand up. I would like to hear what she has to say.
Ms. Malaga, you, the problem is your hand is in a very white area, so I can sometimes not see it. What, what would you like to say?
Nothing, I just, I said I concur with whatever the rest of the dais wants to do to keep it easy. I, you know, I'll go with the flow. I just, I want to really make sure that we have public input on this conversation going forward.
Which gives us time. More time to get, to get that out.
Okay, all right. So, thank you, Mr. McBoy. I think you've hit your list. We're going to move on. District one, let's, let's do district one.
Thank you. I have a couple of things I just wanted to see if I could get consensus on. The first is recognizing Father Frank from the Guatemalan Center for over 60 years of service to the community. I think it would be nice if we, as a city, recognized him and his dedication and brought him in and either did a proclamation or some kind of certificate of appreciation for him. I think that would be the least that we could do for all the things that he has done for our community.
Any objection to that? Any objection?
No objection to that.
All right, thank you. I hear no, what?
I do think it's a little unfortunate that when Father Frank came and did a vigil for children, none of us showed up. None of us showed up, so it's a little ironic.
The lectures are getting tiresome, Mr. McBoy.
Please take your personal opinions to yourself. Thank you. I brought this up on July 25th, and it has not been put on the, on the agenda, and I had mentioned it back on June 13th. So this has nothing to do with a vigil that was just held, and my godson was Guatemalan, so just stop with all your rhetoric. The second thing is, is there, we have billboards that are on city property, and I have been inquiring to staff and to legal to try to pull the language on those billboard leases and to find out when those billboard leases are expiring, what, what our legal ramifications are. Do we have to, you know, do we have to extend them? When is all that going to come forward? I know that Christie Godot was looking into it, but I just want to keep that at the forefront of all of our minds. These are the billboards that are off of I-95. It's something that the previous city commission 18 years ago or something went into an agreement with. I am not in favor of extending those leases in the near future. I think they're an eyesore, and it's just something that I would like us to talk about in the future, once Christie does find out when they, when the leases are, their terms are up.
I would add to that, the revenue that we get, to find out what are we actually getting for them.
Yeah, and it was, it was done a long, long, long time ago, and they have changed hands and ownership since then as well. The other thing I wanted to find out, if I can get just support, I had recommended something to HR. We have a lot of employees who refer other employees to apply for positions here, and we don't have a referral program for our employees. So a lot of municipalities, a lot of counties, if you refer, let's say I refer Joan, and Joan gets a job in, you know, leisure services, and she works in leisure services for six months. For me being an employee that referred her, there could be a referral bonus. And I'm just wondering if we can have HR look into doing something like that to encourage our employees to encourage their fa, family and friends to, to apply for the city. Why do you look perplexed, Mayor?
It's just, it's a concept I've never.
A lot, a lot of municipalities, a lot of counties, businesses do do something like that. And I just, I was wondering if we could have HR possibly look into it. It's just another way to get good quality people in the city to work for the city.
Mr. Segrich?
I would, I would consent to that. I don't know if there's any legalities around that. I know I've, I've had a couple of discussions about compensation and so on, and given the, the unions and our negotiations with those contracts. But if it's allowable, I would be in favor of it. I agree with Commissioner Malaga. It, it does help organizations grow in a healthy manner, and people are happier working with people they know and, and that they refer.
How, what kind of bonus, what number are you, do you have an idea?
It's whatever HR could work out through the negotiations with the union contracts or the non-union employees, just for them to be able to research it and look into something like that, because it's never been, it hasn't been done in the city. And one of our employees alone has referred like five people that still work for the city, and she continues to encourage her family and friends, and I'm, to me, I just wish that there was a way that we could say thank you.
Sure, any problems with that, anybody? You have consensus to go forward?
I, I'm not totally comfortable with it. I am familiar that it is a common practice in, in businesses, in private businesses. I'm not aware, I've never heard of it in municipal government. Perhaps somebody could look into, you know, do other places do it?
I think they have. I think that's what Ms. Malaga just said.
It's reported, but I don't know.
Asking for, you know, consideration for HR, see if it's a good policy to bring forward.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Anything else?
No, ma'am, I'm all good with the agenda. I did have my one-on-one with Jamie on Tuesday.
Yeah, okay, Mimi, Ms. May?
Let's see. I want to make sure that I'm not asking general questions that I should have asked in my one-on-one, so. But I do, I, I guess I have two things. One, I was driving by Oceano yesterday, and they have that entire block in front of them, all blocked off for valet still. So I'd like to see the valet permits that have been applied for and approved. I'd like to see those documents. I want to see exactly what they say and who applied for them and who got them.
I think that, Mr. Brown has, let me, Mr. Brown, you want to, are you responding to that, or?
Oh, yeah, Melissa in our office, they actually, she's been in contact this week with the current valet parking holders. We've split those two permits between sidewalk cafe and valet. Those are going out to the people who currently have a sidewalk cafe permit or a valet parking permit to start this process, because the new permits will go into effect on October 1st.
Okay, but I want to see, I want to see the ones that we have now.
Okay, and, and keep in mind, the ones we have now are the ones that we did prorated that went into effect, was that two months ago, I think, back in June? It would just take them up through the end of September 30th, the new ones where we've split the permit and changed that process.
I want to see who has a legal permit right now, today.
Okay, yeah, there's only three.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to see those, please.
Okay, I see Tiana's hand up.
Didn't they have those permits displayed somewhere on the valet sign?
Yes.
Okay, I see Tiana's hand is up.
Good morning, Commission. I just wanted to follow up. Our parking team has been monitoring the spaces. I will remind them again, and we will follow up today to ensure that they are not taking up more spaces, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My other, my other thing is about new business F, and this, Tiana, this is going to kind of be for you, too. The Bryant Park South Pavilion. So that's the one that, that we see a lot of use by non-permitted individuals. And I'm a little uncomfortable allocating $100,000 to fix it up, to have it trashed again. If anybody, I don't, I mean, I just, that makes me uncomfortable. So if we're going to spend $100,000 and maintain with this RMJ maintenance and update and improve the pavilion, we need to monitor it, and we need to make sure that it's only used when it is permitted.
I think the idea of permits, let me just, I mean, it's a public park, and I know that we have, you know, the home, the issue with the south end of public, the south end of Bryant Park and the pavilion being taken over, but, I mean, if you're walking in the park and you want to sit down and have a cup of coffee in the pavilion, if it's not rented, anyone is.
No, that's, that's not what I'm saying. No, that's, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there's events going on and there's all day use of the pavilion. Not sit and have a cup of coffee. That's not what I'm talking about.
Well, are the, I, I guess I'm confused at what you're talking about.
I'm just talking about the fact that it's getting, it's getting damaged in ways that it doesn't need to be damaged. And I just feel uncomfortable spending that much money on something that, it's gonna be ruined. Why would you, I don't know.
Well, I, Mr. Brown.
I'm really uncomfortable with it.
Okay, Mr. Brown, I, are you aware of like what, um, improvements or may, you know, what, what's been, it's been a long, I mean, it's been there a long time. When was the last time it was like?
It said, it said it's been thirty years. So I know, I know it needs to be improved. I am not denying that.
So, so what we're doing with, um, some of these improvements now, and let me see if I can share my screen here. Uh. Can you guys all see my screen now?
Uh.
Not yet, but it's coming, I think.
You started the screen. Double click to enter full screen. There we go.
Okay, so this was just, uh, a few days ago at sun, at Sunset Park. We see this, I don't send them, I don't send them to you guys that often, but we see this constantly. Where it's just straight vandalism. So what we're doing as we're upgrading these park bathrooms and stuff now, instead of having the actual sinks that are just on the wall, we're doing full basins, we're moving to concrete and doing things that are more, uh, difficult to break vandalize everything else. Because we, we just, we've gotten to a point where we spend so much money on an annual basis, um, fixing vandalism like this, whether it's water fountains in Bryant Park, sinks, um, they rip partitions off of, uh, the walls and everything. So it, it's a lot of, let me stop sharing here. Um, but that was just an example just from this week. So as we're doing these upgrades, we're changing some of the fixtures, changing how we're doing some of the things. So it's not as easy to, to tear up and vandalize because we do waste it in crazy.
I've been, I've been in places where you had to pay to get into the pub, it's locked. And you pay, uh, to me, that seems like a, a, a possible solution because it's ridiculous.
Staff will not bring that forward.
What?
The staff will not be bringing that forward.
Why not? I mean, I, I mean, it's, we offer this service and we offer this amenity to people. And we are tra, I mean, that Sunset Park, I know it's happened down at the lake, at the Bryant Park North End. I know that it's happened down there. So, yes, we are, so I, I, do we continue? I mean, it may be a question for the commission. Do we continue to offer bathrooms to the public at the parks? All over Europe and everywhere else in the world, they charge, you pay, you pay. You don't go in without paying.
If, if I could comment, almost all of the European ones have an attendant. And the attendant collects tips and works.
It was, it was a coin machine, you put the coin in. And Mr. McVoy, I thought you had a point. We were very generous with you with time.
I, I do, I'm trying to stay as long as possible.
Ms. Malaga?
Cut out about forty-five.
Wait, I.
Or Ms. May, we're back on Ms. May, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So I, you know, I appreciate the conversation and I just think, you know, and, and it possibly might go forward to our conversation about, um, park rangers. I mean, it, it, there is some, there is some, you know, thought that the park rangers might be able to affect some of that vandalism. But it just, thank you, Mr. Brown, for explaining that we are making them less able to be destroyed. Um, but that just, that's very, that's heartbreaking. Um.
That's like a mandate.
And the other third thing I, and I, I don't mean to be doom and gloom today, but this, this is what I'm getting from some of, some of the residents. I've gotten complaints about the customer service calling, um, in for like the permits. Where people will call and the, the people that are answering the phone are rude to them. Or they hang up on them, or they say, I can't hear you and hang up. And then when they call back, it goes straight to voicemail. So, um, I, I mean, I'm just telling you what I, the reports that I'm getting. So I don't know. Um, I might want to spend some time over and just sit and listen, customer service, but, um, I, you know, that's the front, front-facing for our city. And that is a really, really important position to have a pleasant person at. And I'm not saying that, but they're not. I'm just saying that, that we need to really consider our public, I mean, our customer service. Because those, they're our bosses. These people are the ones that vote for us and then they pay their taxes and then these people get hired and we need to be nice to them. We play.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to that because, um, it's, I think that goes beyond just the people that answer the phone. I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, I get, I get emails sometimes from, oh my God, you know, these people were great. More often than I do get emails, right? About, but, you know, like, I put, and always there's at least two sides to the story as we have discovered.
And I'm not saying that this is general, I'm just saying this is what's been reported to me.
Right. So, uh, but I, there does seem to be, and Lake Worth has had a, a reputation frankly, of being unfriendly um, to people in that situation. So, um, I, I think it's something that we need to be talked about or fixed or something.
Yeah, or I mean, I don't know how often employees are getting, um, evaluated, but that, if you're a front-facing customer service employee, that should be something that you need to be evaluated on. And if you need training or you need help, then you get it.
Maybe we need a training to talk about, it's, it's, it's almost like the culture of, of the thing. Maybe we need, employees should have training as to effective, it shouldn't even.
But then it needs to be monitored. They need to be, uh, held to a high standard. And if they don't meet it, then they get help. You know, they get training. And if they can't meet that with help, with training, then maybe they're not employed by us.
Mr. Segrits?
Uh, Mr. Brown has his hand up.
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention on that, uh, timely conversation, um, myself and the assistant, uh, city manager actually just had a conversation with our HR director this week on, uh, getting training, um, updating training and everything for, for city staff, especially front-facing, specifically on customer service. Like that literally just happened like two days ago. Um, so we're already on that whole thing. And it'd be nice to know also the timing because keep in mind that after hours, we do have a call service that takes calls. So I'd be really curious to know.
No, these are during, during business hours.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. So this is city staff that it's doing.
City staff, correct.
Okay. But we, we're on.
I, I don't, Mimi, if you got this, you know, the, um, a, a response from, an alleged response, an alleged response from a code enforcement officer to a citizen that was having a problem. It's like, like get over it. Wasn't as, I, I think I forwarded that to Mr. Brown and Mr. Perry.
Well, and I'm sure that there's, you know, I just want to make sure that we offer the training to, to the employees, that they are held to the highest standard, that they have the ability to be successful. I am not accusing anybody. I just want to make sure that we have the best employee, the, a best customer service that we have.
And we appreciate that because that's the information we need to know. Because again, that is the face of the city. So we need to make sure that we're, we're doing the right thing. So, or sorry, Commissioner Segretz.
Um, thank you. Um, so I, I agree with the concerns. Um, you know, uh, I had several meetings, uh, with Jamie and the assistant city manager on, on this exact topic, um, with some specific examples and, and staff. And it was very helpful to, to go through specific examples and, and, and look at things. Um, out of that, that meeting, I, I came back with just some observations and, and some things that I think are needs that, that our city has. And I was going to bring them up, um, for consensus. Um, on this particular topic of customer service, um, we don't really have any kind of customer service or front-of-the-house technology to help our staff. So a lot of times our staff, um, is receiving phone calls and messages from all directions. And they each have to self-manage that. Um, and then they need to go and coordinate with another department. And they still have to self-manage that. Um, there are customer service technologies out there that could act as a front-of-the-house that can help with call tracking, call monitoring for, uh, training purposes, um, survey feedback on the backend, as well as the communication channel of, you know, if they call in, they get somebody at the permitting customer service and then they have to transfer them over to somewhere else and somewhere else, that it tracks that conversation to ensure that each of those inquiries gets handled. So I would, you know, in, in my time, I was gonna ask consensus of, of my colleagues um, to have the discussion on allocating some budget to bring in a customer service, front-of-the-house technology that will, that I believe will, will greatly help us improve this. And it will also give us the ability to gather metrics and feedback. Because you can do all the training you want in the world. If you don't have realistic metrics and feedback, all you're getting is the feedback from people calling us and then us calling staff. And that's a lot of he said, she said, particular things. When, when a manager can listen to the phone call in question and say, how was it handled? That's very, very powerful from a training perspective, um, and increase in the quality. So I would just like to ask consensus to, to have staff investigate, um, costs and systems for, uh, front-end customer service technology.
Did you read, uh, Mr. Brown, William Brown, our internal auditor, his report on the permitting process? I, Mr., I think Mr. Perry and Mr. Brown are, that's part of what they're doing is sort of integrating those recommendations into. But, uh, and I, there was this, there was a program, as, as, there's a, there's a.
There's a new program, yeah, there is a new program going in that's going to help with a lot of our back office stuff. Um, it's like Central Square or Town Square, whatever it's called. Generation of Navoline. Um, but, um, the front of the house, getting that inquiry into the appropriate person and getting answered, we don't really have anything that can successfully manage that. People are doing it on their own and they're doing the best they can. But it's, you know, fraught, error-prone. Um, and it can cause a lot of frustration on both sides.
So do we have consensus to have staff just look at the possibilities?
Absolutely.
If, if I could.
Mr. McVoy?
Yeah, if I could tag on to what the mayor said, um, our internal auditor, who, you know, his whole job is to try to make our processes work better, did a very extensive process of looking at, I think it was, it overlapped with the air of concern that Commissioner May has related. Um, and had very concrete suggestions. So I would say if they apply to this, which I believe they do, um, or could be extended to this easily, let's make sure that we are in fact following the recommendations that he made, that were worked out with that department. Um, and that we get some regular updates as to progress on that. And if this, the, the kind of software that, uh, Commissioner Segretz is referring to, if that's part of that, then I'm a hundred percent forward, for it. Um, I suspect it is.
Thank you. Um, yeah, they just, the staff just indicated that they are looking, paying attention to Mr. Brown's, um, report and.
The other Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown. Jamie?
Yeah, we actually have, uh, when we, that was another thing that was discussed, uh, actually this week. Um, we have our IT director, Nellie, um, working and coordinating with, uh, William Waters. So we're gonna actually, in going through, uh, Mr. Brown's report, um, we're going to send out, um, correspondence to all of you that actually addresses all the items in his report and actually shows what the newer ERP is going to actually address in that report and the things and show where the gaps and the holes are gonna be. So I think that'll be beneficial for you guys to see, um, the actual response to his report. So you can see what's going to be addressed with the new system, what's not. So then we can identify what, where the holes are and what we need to actually address. So another thing that we are working on. So you guys will be getting that pretty soon.
Thank you.
Ms. May?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Segretz. Oh, I was, before, Miss, uh, for the meeting on two, well, we have, they don't have garage on anymore. I wanted to limit all comments in five minutes. And then if we have extra time, we can go back to some general, as a general thing, uh, so that we don't end up at eleven o'clock all the time. So, um, I just want to put that out there. Mr. Segretz?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh. Some of the, the conversations that we had, uh, last week, um, just refreshed in, in my mind. We, we had granted consensus for, for staff to, to look at or put on an agenda about an ombudsman. Um, and, um, very happy we, we have that. We also, you know, in looking at our budget, um, I know that we as a commission have a budget item for an executive assistant. And that role to be someone who can help with research and, and do everything else like that. I really would like to see if there's any, um, appetite to kind of combine that role so that that person would, would be able to serve as a liaison, um, for the businesses. And one of the things that we, we kind of touched upon in our conversations was, you know, when somebody applies for a business license, right now, the greeting they get is the city comes out and cites them for all their code deficiencies. It's not a very welcoming process.
No.
And what, what I'd like to see is when someone applies for their business license, we know that into the commission office. And this person, the ombudsman or our executive assistant, reaches out to that business and says, welcome to the city, how can I help? You know, um, and helps guide them through that opening up process as well as giving direction for policy such that when we go out to a brand-new business, we're not immediately hitting them with a code violation. We used to do provisional, um, business licenses, uh, where we would say, hey, you know, you've got these deficiencies, you've got some of these issues, so long as they're not life, health, safety kind of things. Um, you know, the planter's wrong or, or something like that. Um, or you've got a cracked window. Um, allow that business to get a provisional license and work with the ombudsman or our executive assistant to get through that process within thirty to sixty days. And then if they haven't complied, uh, complied at that point, issue a, a violation. So there's really kind of two parts to that consensus item. But, um, I really think now's the time that, that we can take action on this. And, um, we could have a really positive impact. We had a, a, you know, a new business come into town, they, they were trying to do everything the right way. And they felt very frustrated and very, very attacked. Um, and when we all met with them and everything, we got it all smoothed out. But it's, you know, it's just changing the paradigm. It's whether we walk up to a new business with a handshake and a welcome, or we walk up to them with a citation. And I'd like to see it be a handshake and a welcome.
Well, like I said earlier, the culture has never been great in terms of, of that in the city. Um, now, you, you raised an interesting question that we have not, I mean, when three of us were elected at the first time, we had an assistant who did an amazing job. And then we had, you know, part-time assistant. She was wonderful, but it was, she was, you know, it didn't work out for, for her. And now since she's been back to her position, we don't have an assistant. We haven't had an assistant. And there were things, I mean, there are things that I'd like to do. How many, you know, there were assignments that we would ask, you know, Savina, please find out about this, right? So we have, you know, in terms of being on the city commission, we've had a real lack. And, uh, you know, staffs were this, we have had a real lack of any help in terms, now, Shona has stepped in, she's done a great job with the travel and everything else. But there are things that I would like to have looked at that I can't because there's nobody to do it. Um, and we, you know, we've gone around with, the perfect person has to have experience and I, I don't, I'm very frustrated because we've, you know, our performance has not been assisted by a staff member that's budgeted that we are supposed to have. Um, in terms of the ombudsman, and just give me my two cents, I mean, it's a good, I've always talked about an ombudsman. I don't know if those two roles could, you know, I think what you're saying has a great value. And I think let's try to figure out a way to like un, unbundle it and see what, because some of that stuff, I mean, the, the building department if we're talking about, you know, the electron, you know, um, having a new system, that might be part of it. Um, but I agree with you completely about, we don't, that's, hey, did you hear about this store that's opening? No, I didn't hear about that. It would be really fun to get an update if there's a business license being applied for so that we have an idea of what's going on in the city.
Yeah, we get questioned all the time and it's like, I don't know.
I don't know. So, um.
I'm gonna, I have to run.
Mr. McVoy, okay, yes, yes.
I just, just wanted to say that regarding the content of a welcoming approach and a personal sort of approach to new businesses, I couldn't agree with Commissioner Segretz more. I've, can't tell you how many calls over the years.
It's not, Mr. Mc, nine fifty-one, you take, you took up a lot of times.
Yeah, gotta go.
Thank you.
Thanks, just agreeing. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Mr. Malaga, Ms. Malaga?
Um, thank you. I, I agree that we need somebody as a business liaison. Um, the Business Advisory Board actually talked about this last week and they're advocating for it. Um, my concern is that I, I think it needs to be two separate people, even if that ombudsman is a, is a part-time position that only focuses on business liaison. But I agree with you, Madam Mayor, um, it's very hard for me to do research on the stuff that I want to get done. And I, I really miss having a full, I love, 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 love. It's very hard for me to do research on the stuff that I want to get done. And I I really miss having a full, I love, 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 love. Um, I, you know, she's also working for the city manager's office. And, you know, I I I would like to have somebody, even if we had a part-time executive assistant and we split that funding between the two departments, I I don't think that that's something that one person should take on both. I think it's two different entities. It's two different animals. But I do support moving forward on both a hundred percent.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Brown, I see your hand is up and I just, you know, I mean, there when we were, when you were all looking, you know, we don't look at to look at the resumes and, you know, they're well, we want somebody with government experience. I don't think, I think common sense, adult behavior, intelligence, organizational skills, it's not that hard. But we have to listen, we get elected to the commission and all of a sudden you're you're mayor, you're a commissioner. Learn really fast how to do it. I don't, and if if you've even, none of us have had political experience before. So I don't know that we really have to make that limited thing about you know, that 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 assistant has to have, I mean, I'm I'm very, as you can tell, I'm frustrated. There's a person I know who's applied for the job who would be wonderful on the job and she's not, I don't think she has enough government experience, so she wasn't considered. So I'm just like, come on. Let's get somebody in that seat. Miss May?
Um, thank you. I just think that I I kind of disagree with you because of the fact that as you said, we get elected with no experience. We need somebody there that has the experience. And I'm not saying to instruct us, but I feel like I would like to have a um an assistant that kind of knows more than me.
Well, and I think in certain, and I'll just respond, I mean the things like, okay, for example, there's, let's say there's a something I want, you know, looked at, you know, some some research I need done. What is this? What what cities do this, right? That's a person that could do that. That that doesn't necessarily mean, because every city is run differently. I I guess we disagree, Mimi. I guess we just disagree on that. Me, uh, Mr. Segrits?
Um, I I guess, so just pulling my my suggestion apart um into two two areas. I I I think we have consensus on the policy decision of we want our um staff to or explore the idea of of doing the provisional business licenses and not hit them with code violations right away. Um, do we have consensus on that?
I mean, unless they're, I mean.
Yeah.
Well, not health, safety is what Mr. Segrits.
Yeah. So coming back to to the ombudsman um and the the assistant. You know, I'm I'm on the other side of the coin. I I do think that that person would be very effective as the same role. Because I think a lot of the skill sets and the knowledge base that they have would be the same. If you, you know, if somebody's gonna be doing research into our code and our um ordinances for us as an executive assistant. Uh, the ombudsman's gonna have to do that same thing to figure out is what they're being told, because that's one of the biggest complaints out there in in the field is look, they're telling me to do something and then I go read the code and it's just not in there. Um, and so that's a very, very good skill set. So instead of maybe making a decision one way or the other on it. We we haven't done this with the, I know we have the open rec for the executive assistant, but maybe we ha examined the job description. So each and every one of us is gonna have different wants or needs for that job description. So maybe we spend some time with that job description, give feedback and then come back and get consensus on the job description of what we want to fill that one role or two roles with. Um, because maybe we're agreeing and maybe we're only disagreeing on like small pieces. But if we make it about finalizing that job description, we can all get on the same page.
Not a bad idea. Uh, Mr. Brown?
I love that you think that five people will get on the same page. I love your enthusiasm.
Yeah. Mr. Brown, we're really close on time. We're really close on time, Mr. Brown.
I I will say that um I was a part of the the first round of interviews for that position. Um, there there is a reason we had to have a second round of interviews. Um, just a few weeks ago, I know I I was not on that second round, but Mr. Perry was on that second round interviews. Um. I believe we're in the same situation as of right now. So what we can do if there's consensus is look into and I I know Troy, um you had a lot of experience in Riviera Beach and the way they kind of do things with with their electeds and everything there. We might be able to look into a possible job description or what's out there as far as a a position like this, a combined position. Uh, but then get that description to all of you to see what your thoughts are, if that meets your needs. Um, and we might just have to then put this thing out again with the with the.
So that would be a place to see, so you what I'm think, what I'm hearing is you'll do something, a a a draft and then get our responses to it?
Correct. With HR, a lot of times what we'll do is we'll pull um from a county, pull from different places to get the 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 pay grade, to get the actual description, see how we would need to modify that based on your needs and all this other stuff. So we can look at that.
Okay.
It's gonna get back to you.
I'm gonna call Elizabeth. We're almost out of time. Elizabeth?
Thank you. Um, so on the business licenses, I just want to make sure that we're clear that in your code, business licenses cannot be issued if there are violations on the property, which is why that's one of the initial things is the inspection and review for violations. So we couldn't take policy direction that counteracts that, but we can bring back um proposed changes to the code and things like that for for you all to consider.
Thank you. I I think our uh group, are we asking our staff are legal to do that, to take a look at that?
I think so. If it if it's hindering the feeling of welcoming somebody to the city, then I think it's something we need to look at.
It's really good. And the other, the another issue, just kind of separate, and I apologize, but I haven't really had, you know, somebody buys a house and there's you know, work was done without a permit years ago. And now what is?
Yeah, that's not fair.
Yeah, I I I have, you know, we get a lot of, we get a lot of that and.
That's always next on my list.
Well, see, there you go. I'm reading your mind. That's scary. Okay. Um. Um, yeah, I mean, there are some things that I think, you know, and and here's the thing that when I ever discuss with stuff, it's like, you know, where do you, it's that slippery slope. Where do you stop taking? Where is it five years? It was done three years ago, twenty years ago. I mean, I had folks years ago that were trying to improve this really do great stuff. And the first thing the guy came in who looked at the air conditioner, went back to the office, looked up, couldn't find the permit for the air conditioner and started with that, before they could even improve their property. Um, and I hope there's also a very good example of, you know, there was no permit for that. Well, it was misfiled. Because there was a former commissioner who had her 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 windows done, you know, storm windows completely permitted. A couple, oh, you know, sometime later, her neighbor at the same number but a street over had happened to look in his file and said, hey, I've got your permits. They were not in her file. So if someone would have looked at her file and said, you did without a permit, prove it. So sometimes I think we need to give, there's, I get the sense that was like citizens are trying to get something over on us. And I think that we need to have a little bit of, give the citizens the benefit of the doubt in those situations. Um, unless, you know, it's health, safety, the whatever, but okay, and we're just.
I apologize. William Waters had his hand up.
Oh, Mr. Waters.
Hi, and in reference to um Elizabeth's comment, at the same time, I would like to bring back uh the policy that was adopted that does not allow the utilities to be turned on without a business license or the application being at least in process. That's one of the biggest ones and um that has caused consternation a lot with residential property owners. But it's also a concern with commercial ones. But on the other end, once the lights are turned on, it's very difficult to turn them off if you haven't, unless you haven't paid your bill. So that would be a a conversation that I think both Elizabeth and I would appreciate.
Yeah, I I think that's, I think that's good because you can't, there used to be a thing where you could, if I buy a property, you could have the electricity turned on for two weeks to get the place ready to be rented. And then, you know, then the the next person would.
We still have that.
Oh, we do. Okay, good. Okay, it is now ten. Mr. Segrits, um thirty seconds? Okay, um it's ten or one?
Nevermind, nevermind.
Now you've got me intrigued.
I I was gonna bring up um part of this conversation also should be the commercial landlord business licensing. Um, there's a lot of um back and forth with with that. Other municipalities, some of them do it, some of them don't do it. And really, a lot of the the code issues fall on the tenant and we put it on the building owner. Um, so I'd like to explore how we could put greater onus on the tenant who's actually the one doing the build out and and so on.
Well, statute, right. Uh, but you want to talk to William and and Elizabeth about that? Okay, so have a great weekend, everybody. Um, see you Tuesday night, if not before.